We've done environments, yes, projects, which we actually had a little tour last week. They showed, you know, some, some restoration projects, providing birdhouses, then the projects in adding some traditional species to the property. So we're here to listen as a group, bringing on good partners like John Wickersham, who we've, we've done other constantly easements with, or classic tree farm. We work closely with the city of Cannon Beach just recently to help them with some pro-bono projects for some maintenance to provide fire protection. We've also worked with other companies, or other NGO groups such as Columbia Land Trust to, for easements and stuff. So we're here just, just is to provide support and, and, and protection of the watersheds. Currently, our class of block, we have six municipal watersheds, provide cool and clean water to the communities. So again, I know we all have the MOU here to, here to support whatever comes of it and come together and you know, to provide cool and clean water for this beautiful community. So that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselors, any questions for Mr. Whippersham or Mr. Brown? All right. Thank you both very much for taking your time to come and speak with us. It's appreciated. All right. We recognize and welcome Nan Devlin of the Tillamook Coast Visitors Association to brief us on the Business Facade Improvement Grant Program.
Thank you. Before I start too, I'd like to, I know many of you know Marnie Johnston, who's sitting here in the back. She is now working with us as our finance and grant manager. So she'll be very much involved if this, you approve this facade improvement grant, she'll be very involved in that. So this, I'm here to talk about a, an idea that I'm so glad that Luke brought to us because it's something I've been wanting the cities to do for a long, long time. And this is sort of along the lines of our, the county tourism facilities grant. But a little more refined and a little more defined. So this one is a facade improvement grant. And the whole idea is to improve the look of our buildings that the visitor see when they come in. Because first impressions can make a huge difference for someone, whether they're looking to start a business or they're looking to move here. It kind of shows how much you care about how the locals care about their community. And really, so the more a city could do to help make the town better, how we can go to that. It's the more economic vitality that will occur too. New investments are already happening here. It's been pretty exciting. A lot of people have moved here. I just learned that during COVID, I think it was 2022, actually. A hundred and sixty-five families moved to Tillamook County as full-time residents. And their, um, average salary per income was two hundred and forty thousand a year. So we're attracting people making, you know, life investments there. But improved facades can make a huge difference. And this grant, which we're proposing to be two hundred thousand for the maximum tax ask of twenty thousand, no match required, is to improve the visitor-facing exteriors of commercial buildings within the city of Rockaway Beach. And when you achieve those visible results, you can enhance the image of the town and the marketability for people looking to invest. Next slide. I have, I have a slide missing. No, here we are. In backwards. Sorry. So it's a two hundred thousand dollar grant, twenty percent, twenty thousand dollars maximum class, no match required, like I said. And who is eligible? So property owners of buildings in Rockaway Beach, commercial zones that are for profit and tourism-based businesses. Business owners or tenants of commercial buildings operating tourism-based businesses with written consent of a property owner. And applicants must have a current business license and show proof that property and other taxes are current. And we're putting out, we've put a list together for that will be in marketing grant application about all the projects that are eligible. And it's quite long, actually. And around this, we will probably be doing, we will be doing a promotional campaign because Rockaway Beach has an ordinance that the lodging tax, it's like twenty percent of the lodging tax can go towards tourism projects. That's where this fund is coming from. So we want to do like a whole new look campaign for the town. Once everybody's projects are done and we can show videos, we can show the owners in front of their businesses. We'll do some more photography, which will be shared with all those businesses, and we'll do other marketing efforts as well. And the visit rockawaybeach.org website will showcase all that. So if you could go to the next slide. I got that. We did that. Okay. So I want to show you something. There are towns that have done this and it's made a huge, huge difference. About two thousand nine, I think I did a tourism planning, our tourism plan for the city of Independence. And this is what it looked like in two thousand two, and it was still looking like that in two thousand nine. Boarded up buildings. That, see that historic building with the pillar on the top? That was owned by someone from out of state. They were letting it crumble, just crumble. And they were to the city and the EDC director there were trying to get them to come and take care of the building because they wanted to get renters in there, VCs and shops and things. And they didn't do it. They didn't do it. And finally, some of the building bricks and things started to fall off. So they were able to condemn it. And now it's, it's, if you go to the next slide, this is what downtown looks like then, like they're that same shop. All those businesses moved in after they got treason and they put out grants to help people start businesses. It really is. I was just there in May for, about to do a presentation for the marketing group there. And it is so lively. And it's like kind of a dream come true. They had a vision. You go to the next one. So this is on Second and Monmouth Street. This is two, also two thousand two, with pretty blank, kind of desolate. Next slide. They built a library there. And they said they get a hundred thousand visitors to that library that's right here. But it really changed the whole look of that corner. The next one. There's downtown again in even two years before. The next one. There it is again. Not beautiful. It's just welcoming, right? So the next slide is amazing. So this doesn't even really show how bad this was. This was a huge field in front of the Volamoc River. And there was an abandoned gravel pit in front of the Volamoc River. And this was shot on a really good day because the grass was green. Usually it was pretty awful. So next slide. So this is what this river park looks like now. They used urban renewal, they used, uh, our core engineers to clear it. They brought in, I think it was the National Guard, and they came in and they did, they took, brought their trucks and they cleared all the land as, as a exercise for them. But what this doesn't show is this beautiful river walk all in front of the river. They had never had a hotel there. They only had a three-bedroom, but three rooms, bed and breakfast, and a beautiful new hotel in town called the Independence Hotel. I stayed there. It's wonderful. And the, they said to the hotel builder, the hotel investors, you know, we also need some apartments here. We need, we need workforce housing. So right next to the hotel, they built several apartments in very beautiful style that matches us. So this has become just a beautiful central point for the town. And all it took really was putting in some trees and giving some money to get those buildings fixed up. And it's lovely, lovely town now. So. So I think that's it. Yeah. So we are proposing this to open October first. And we'll probably have a deadline of close to December. I'll have to check with Luke and Marty and see how we can make this happen with. I almost got the application ready. And it's when you have a view approved this grant, go forward with it. Any question?
Yes, I have, I have one. And thank you for the presentation. I go to Independence often. I was just there this weekend. And its transformation has been phenomenal. I'm also aware it was a collaboration with a lot of different programs and agencies, but it's been phenomenal. And, and, and for us though, in case people are listening, just to make sure they understand, make sure I understand, actually. You, you said property owners. A lot of our businesses are leased. Does this mean that they have, they need to collaborate with the owner of the property to apply?
Get written permission.
Okay. And this is being funded by the city.
Yes.
And the grant will be approved by city council, but your agency will manage, manage the program for the city.
We'll manage, yeah, okay. And the program and we can do, we'll do the contracts. We'll get an MOU in place with the city and, you know, just like we do with the marketing grants, same process.
And, and one more clarification, because I want people to apply for this. Beautifying Rockaway has been on my, high on my list for a long time. So the other clarif, the other clarification is it's just for the facade, the, the front of the building.
Visitor facing and, and that is something that I've talked to Mary Johnson and Luke about is if you've got a building that shows both, you know, like one side and then a front, it would qualify as visitor facing.
Okay. Thank you.
And one more thing to clarify your, your question, counselor. I believe also ADA upgrades to bathrooms and entities are also eligible, right? Okay.
No, in fact, we did recently, my team, we did a survey of ADA hotels, like what, what hotels had like roll-in showers and things like that. And Rockaway didn't have any. And so I called, I called Jake Kim, the owner of the Rockaway Large Hotel here. I said, is it true? You don't have ADA bathrooms and, and ADA entrances? He said, well, we have some, but they're not like the kind that's really accessible for wheelchair much. So I told him that hopefully this grant would go through and.
And I had one more question, or hopefully that you, I guess, a request of you more than a question of your agency. Will there be some workshops for these people, for the people who apply for the grants? Because twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money to, for people. And, and I can see that it'll be very competitive. So will your agency be holding some workshops on how to fill out the applications or something?
Yeah. And we've made it, we have simplified it so much. And we've spelled it out in the application. And also it'll be spelled out on the website step by step. We can do, we're open. I'm going to be on vacation for the first half of October, and I'd hate to come back and say, oh, you've only got a month left to do this. But we'll, we'll be available for, for all kinds of questions. Yes.
So my requ, my requests around it would be that it included things like paving or pavers or landscaping.
If it's, yes, if it's visitor facing and it's connected to your building.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and with the, the grant application will show what is eligible and what is not eligible. Do you want me to go through that real quick? I've got it.
I would love to hear a list of, for me, like pavers create stormwater drainage. Like I know I say that just constantly, but I, I, I really would like to make sure that that.
So eligible projects are cleaning preparation and painting of exterior walls and trim, including murals or similar artwork. Repair, replacement, or installation of awnings, windows, exterior lighting, and doors. Repairs or reconstruction of entryways, including removal of barriers for those with disabilities. Repair and replacement or installation of exterior masonry or siding materials. So pavers could qualify, I suppose. Removal of signs for new signs. And if you want a new sign, you could apply for the marketing grant for new signs. Work on cornices, gutters, and downspots. Asbestos or hazardous material abatement. Add or improve ADA accessibility, which is ADA rooms for roll-in showers or ADA fixtures. Attracted fencing to reduce traffic noise or visuals for outdoor dining areas that are associated to local, you know, hardware one-on-one. I'm thinking of the, the, uh, Rito stand down here, you know, you're sitting at that on the benches and the trucks and everything going by. It'd be nice to have some sort of fencing there. Beautification elements such as planters, benches, or other street sweeping. And ineligible projects are refinancing of existing debt. In interior improvements other than the ADA roofs. The exception with the roof is if the area extends over entryway awnings. And there I've noticed a couple of buildings that, that repair. Structural foundations, financing of inventory, financing of building acquisition, working capital. Here's landscaping is not eligible. And nonprofits are not eligible for this particular grant. So it's pretty extensive. And you don't know match required. So that's pretty good. Twenty thousand dollars can do a lot.
I have a question for the city manager. And we will have this well explained on the city website.
You will. And, and just to clarify is the, the, the council's involvement is, is, is going to be the approval of the awards. So we will definitely come back to you all for, for any awards we make here in Rockaway.
But we are moving forward with this. Yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions from council?
I, I wonder why exclude nonprofits because we only have a few nonprofit buildings like the Lions or the Caboose. I, is that where visitors go? I don't know. I'm asking you. The visitors go to those places. It's the visitor center. Yeah, yours. Yeah. Well, and, and the Lions all the time. They do Chrissy's Bazaar's.
They do bingo on Saturday nights.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Just about with any celebration that we have in town, the Lions do something. They have bingos. Yeah. Absolutely.
Want to talk to Luke about that.
Yeah. And I, I think the, the intent was to get the business corridor fixed. We have already have a, a community, uh, uh, program, grant program for, for nonprofits. And we were trying to target businesses with this program. That's, that's why.
So that's three thousand dollars and this is twenty thousand dollars. And that's the visitor center sitting in the middle of town. And so to me, I live.
Different grants, just two different things. And also there's the community, uh, TLT, the county's community, TLT grants, facilities grants will also be opening October first. And nonprofits apply and file for that.
Thank you.
Among that is seventy-five thousand.
Ah.
Oh.
There's opportunity to elsewhere.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time. We're excited about the program.
Yeah. And I just want to remind people that we'll have an information center, an information meeting about the community and destination management planning on Monday night at six o'clock here. Thank you.
Thanks.
Congratulations on your new hire. Yeah.
I clap. I'm gonna clap again.
All right. Let's move on to our staff reports. The chair recognizes Fire Chief Todd Hesse to report on the fire department.
Mayor, council, city manager, you have before you the council report from the fire department for August of two thousand twenty-three. Before I start that, I'd like to say that, uh, some of the recent events have definitely tested our resolve and what we do at the fire department. Our thoughts go out to the families that are affected in our small community, which we are in a small community. We're all one big happy family, well, family. But our thoughts do go out. We'd like to thank the, the fire department specifically. We'd like to thank the, the city council, city manager, citizens for their support of our department and, and our staff. As we get through some of the difficulties with the events like we just had, but I just want to assure the public that we are prepared to respond. Uh, we've been in service and will continue to be in service. So also I, I shout out to our public safety partners, would be law enforcement, uh, fire ambulance. And it's a pretty strong community that's working together to keep all of us safe all over Tillamook County. Uh, back to the report though, uh, start with our calls. Uh, steady, uh, would be the word I'd use. Uh, we like to say that the summer is the busiest part of our time. Uh, but we're still pretty busy. We haven't really slowed off. I haven't seen that kind of, that slowdown or letdown yet. But we had eighty-three different events in August, thirty-six of them being nine-one-one calls, uh, twenty-six medicals. Again, medicals kind of lead the way for us. Um, but I would have to note zero water rescues. Um, I don't want to call that out necessarily because it kind of jinxes us sometimes, but we, we've had that summer staffing grant. And one of the duties of that, those two individuals on a daily basis when they're on duty is to run the beach and educate personnel. Uh, others will go on the really hot or nice days. We spent a lot of time out there. And I think we've seen a dramatic impact on the number of water rescues along our beaches this year. So education has been very important. Uh, trainings, we had five, did some water rescues, some CPR, some new CPR techniques. So as a community, you should be excited that we're learning some new stuff. Our doctors are right on the cutting edge of all the new techniques, new technology. In fact, Captain Grace is going to an academy up in Seattle in October. That's going to really push the, what the newest, latest and greatest is on CPR and survival rates. And we're seeing a, uh, increase in survival rates. So pretty good. Did some wildland training, some operations training and some vehicle extrication. Non-emergent, you'll notice is pretty high. A lot of that is because we spent a lot of time on the beach. Uh, we did have eleven burn complaints last month, so we're starting to get into that time of year. And then year-to-date calls. You'll notice that the nine-one-one calls have been pretty consistent over the last few years. Non-emergent calls are up a little bit. Trainings, um, we've already had seventy sanctioned trainings this year. Uh, so we're doing a lot of training. Uh, I would, I would call out in the training that tonight, for example, they're starting an EMR class. And I told city manager earlier today, our EMT program starts tonight and will end in June of next year. Um, we have classes twice a week from now till, uh, next June. Uh, we're going to do three different classes. So keeping that elevated. And then water rescue is already talked about. It's times on the beach. You see the data there. So far this year, I point out that we've talked to over three hundred people that have been too deep in the water, out of the water, um, which I think has had a huge impact. Uh, plus we gave out a lot of stickers. It's fifty-one. So fires extinguished. You'll see that we had twenty-seven different campfires that we put out the next day. Uh, we'll say that State Parks has been doing a lot of work to help us with these and reducing our uh, involvement, but we still have put out sixty-two different campfires on the beach this year that were leftovers from the night before. I have to shout out to the emergency preparedness group. They're meeting the first of every month, starting to get more and more traction as we go forward. A couple of things to point out on that group is there is going to be an open house fire department in conjunction with the preparedness group on October seventh. We're feeding people too. So please show up. There's food. You do that health attendance. I'm not eating barbecue. I don't know. We'll see. And then October nineteenth, I have to shout out to Mr. Hassel, Lou Flacher, I think was, might have been the only participant in the great shakeout. Um, that this year we are going to be, have a more formal presentation and will be participating in the great shakeout October nineteenth. Uh, be, be prepared for more information on that. Uh, talking about the summer staffing, our response times have been improved. And, and really have had a benefit to our community. Safety, public education is still foremost. I wrote a note to a couple of things that council members have asked me about. Uh, one, the burn ban update. It's still pretty dry, even though we've had a couple of recent rains, heavy fog. We're not anticipating lifting that burn ban anytime soon yet, but I will keep the community informed. And I had a council member ask me about our wildfire, um, plan, what we have in place in the city. Be prepared for this winter for us to be going over some of the education portions of some of our wildfire plans uh, to help make the community safer in the event of a wildfire. Uh, and last but not least, well, two things. One, we had our ladders tested last week and all our hoes, all six thousand two hundred and fifty foot of our fire hose passed our NMPA inspection. And last but not least, the tower update, the Verizon Tower. If you want a project, anybody wants to spend a lot of time on the phone trying to get nowhere, I would absolutely give this project off to somebody. But I did find a person last week on the phone that gave me the update on where we're at with the tower, with the Verizon Tower. They told him we're getting into the time of year where power outages are more common. And we'd like to know what the status was. And the lady pulled up that the work order was still open from December of twenty-two and was working on giving me an update. So you'll see it at the next council meeting where we're at. And if I can find anything sooner, I'll get it to manager Shepherd. He can get it out to the, the public, but trying to get that fixed before um, we get into the winter months. But what I was to have been told is some of those generator parts are hard to find right now. So that is probably the holdup, but not guaranteed, but I will keep on it.
You talk to them next.
Yes.
Remind them that the owner of the towers actually has a backup generator program that they could sign up for and not have to worry about their own generator.
Okay. Yeah. I will, uh, I will, as visited that again, uh, but they do, yeah.
The way of hoping anywhere we house is another option available to them if they can't get a frigging part to get the generator working. Not that it upsets me at all, but it does.
I, I was just kind of reading between the lines there. I'll tell you, I have been working hard to change that. And the hours on the phone is, is kind of ridiculous for what we're doing if I'm going to speak openly. Yeah. So that's what I have to report. Is there anything I can answer for the council or?
I just think the whole, uh, staff and volunteers for what they've done the last couple of weeks for us.
I will absolutely do that. And, and, uh, thanks, uh, to some of the council members for the nice gestures and the snacks that were provided. Snacks are always good. Firemy lights next. And much, much appreciated. So, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Hesse. Um, the chair recognizes the Tillamook County Sheriff's Office. Uh, we have Deputy Kevin Grogan.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Just a heads up, uh, after concluding my report, uh, we did a Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Just a heads up, after concluding my report, we did a pretty statement from Sheriff Brown, so I'm just going to get my report done. We'll report that then. So as we all know, August was our last full month of summer and it did not disappoint. Sheriff's office was extremely busy, keeping up with the heat traffic change, head dot north one-on-one. As we're all aware, the speed limit got reduced to thirty miles per hour upwards of Northwest Seventh Street. We have been pulling people over, making them known. Brace period is kind of in effect. I understand the resident Rockaway is kind of hard to get. He used to have gone thirty and forty-five. But even then, in my personal vehicle, I am still up for a traffic citation, so make sure we're doing that. Some notable calls of service the month of August. We had a local business whose bank deposit for the month of July through August was taken from their front counter before being deposited in the bank. No suspect information currently. There were multiple calls of a person trespassing on South Coral Street. That person has since been arrested and the case has been turned over to District Attorney. There was a report of a domestic disturbance between two adult siblings during the process of the investigation. Problem caused was determined for arrest of one of the individuals and that has also been reported to the District Attorney's Office. On a positive note, we did have a rare occurrence of a party reporting a stolen vehicle, which it turns out they just forgot what they parked it. So pretty dry case on that one. So all their notes are stated in the report. And I will go ahead and turn it over to Sheriff Dr. Brown.
Thank you, Deputy.
Well, good evening, everyone. Mayor, councilors. First, before I get started, my statement will be brief. Mayor, I want to say thank you for those kind words at the very beginning of the meeting. I believe that that was very gracious and very appropriate. I just wanted to say thank you. I also want to say thank you to Luke because he helped us to rotate, being able to use City Hall last week when we had our large incident. Being able to use City Hall as kind of a base of operations was critical to the success of us being able to move forward with that. So it's no secret, we had an officer involved shooting late last week in Rockaway. Right now, the investigation is ongoing. Platte County Major Crimes Team is responsible for the investigation and they're working directly with the District Attorney of Tillamook County. So Platte County Major Crimes Team is made up of their sheriff's office as well as their multiple city agencies. So they've got Astoria, Warrington, Seaside, Cannon Beach. We have all different offices represented when they were down there doing the investigation. Beyond that, all I can say is that I am unable to say anything else. In order to protect the integrity of the investigations and have all parties on on every side of this protected and given their due diligence, we have to remain you know, where we're at on that. I understand that everybody probably has tons and tons of questions. Answers are definitely wanted. And it will absolutely be our intention to get that information out. How that is actually put out at this point is unknown yet because we have so many different involved organizations between the Platte County Major Crimes Team, the Sheriff's Office, Oregon State Police, the District Attorney's Office. It all has to be coordinated when the time's appropriate. So I mean, I can take questions, but like I said, I'm probably not going to be able to provide any answers. That was very brief.
Ask you about the death that we had at the fire. Are you investigating that in any?
That would be the Fire Marshal to to start out with. So I'm sure that the chief could probably address that a little bit more. Usually in fires and situations like that, that is reverted right back to the Fire Marshal.
Sorry, I didn't get a chance to ask him that.
State Fire Marshal, so. I don't know if you want him to speak about that, but yeah, it didn't really work. We only assist when when needed on us.
I think Chief's answer would be very similar to the sheriff's. Not much he can say.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry to be so short and brief and, you know, but it is what it is.
Thank you for coming in person to give us.
Very well.
I assume you're constantly in touch with our city manager too.
Well, I can I can say this. My goodness, I've got Under Sheriff Kelly. He's right back there trying to hide. But him and Luke are in more contact with each other very, very often. You know, as Under Sheriff, he gets to, he's he's absolutely the representative of the sheriff's office. He gets to to speak on my behalf fully. So they tend to talk a little bit more than what Luke and I get to, so.
Thank you, Sheriff Brown, and and thank you, Under Sheriff Matt Kelly, for being here tonight. We appreciate all that you do for our community. Thank you. All right, well, let's the chair will recognize Public Works Superintendent Dan Emerson to report on public works.
Thank you, Mayor, the council members, City Manager Shepherd. I appreciate the opportunity to find an update on some recent development in City Rockaway Beach Public Works Department. Start with the water containment update. Please report, recent rainfall significantly improved the water containment situation in our city. The increased creek levels have allowed us to relax our water use restrictions and we have been able to shut down one of our supplemental wells due to the improved condition. Additionally, our efforts in identifying and repairing water leaks have contributed to a reduction in water demand. Last month, we successfully located and fixed multiple leaks while also assisting homeowners and identifying their leaks at their homes. Road maintenance. Our dedicated public works team continues its essential work, including maintaining gravel roads and addressing potholes and paved streets. We recently faced a challenge when easy streets suffered a damage from a water main break, but we effectively repaired it by optimizing costs through careful asphalt preparation. Brush cutting remains a priority, especially along our access roads, which they serve a critical route for water and sewer mains. And I'm pleased to note that that the new speed zone from ODOT has been posted. My chair said I have been caught a few times going through their capacity. Our maintenance personnel are currently engaged in various tasks to ensure our public spaces remain in inviting and well-maintained. This includes cutting grass and parks right of ways, road clearing along the boardwalk, routine cleaning, maintenance for restrooms, frequent garbage collection, downtown litter pickup and monitoring cleaning and dog waste at the access, each access points and parks. We are committed to preserving the quality of our parks for residents and visitors. Next is sewer. Our wastewater treatment plant is embarking on an important project this year involving the replacement of two aging sewage pumps along with the associated valves, fittings and pump bases. Finding a suitable contractor for this project proved challenging. After extensive search, we have identified a company that is willing to assist us in this endeavor. We understand the critical nature of this work and are committed to ensuring the smooth execution of the project. And I wanted to express my gratitude for the continued support and trust in our efforts to maintain and improve the city of Rockaway Beach infrastructure. And that is the end of my report. Do you have any questions?
What's the time requirement for the pump replacements?
This this budget year.
I mean, how long will it take for the prop?
Oh, gosh.
To be replaced? Like, is it a week project or a month long?
I'll be lucky to get it done. This, just from getting pumps lead time and everything, like they talked about generator parts.
Acquiring it, but the actual work.
Yeah, we, when you get the stuff in place, we can get that done probably pretty fast. If it's all the right size, we're also limited to many things. Size, this old, an old building or an old station where it'd be putting, creating to, you know, updating and it's limited to size. So new parts aren't the same as old parts. So we need a lot of retrofitting.
You have no idea.
Thank you.
Independent for very good reasons. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Emerson. Well, the floor is yours, City Manager Shepherd.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get to get into the briefing on our action items later on tonight, I do want to point out, if you haven't noticed, we are testing our new technology here. It was nice that John with the NCL, NCLC was able to join us remotely. He's the first one to do so at one of our meetings. And I think it went okay. But Melissa Thompson, our city recorder, worked very hard and so did Josh Romo. They're both sitting right here. They put this together. And I think it's working pretty good. I'm happy. So anyway, later on tonight, we've got some business to attend to. Starting off with the Resolution twenty-three, one thousand and three. And this approves the purchase of a new ladder truck for the fire department. We've talked about this over the over the last few months, whether it's putting together capital purchase plans or workshops with the council. But the idea is to purchase a ladder truck. The total cost is a little over one million dollars. And city is going to put down three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and finance the remaining purchase price. Now, we will have the option to pay this off once we accept delivery of the fire truck. And the city has funds available in its fire equipment reserve fund to do that. But that decision, when it comes in twenty-four, twenty-five, will be up to the Budget Committee and the City Council at that time, whether or not we want to pay off the purchase, the remaining balance of the of the ladder truck. Later tonight, if we can get the purchase agreement approved, Chief, what was the delivery date?
December twenty-four.
Okay, so December, yeah, December twenty-four for delivery. So pretty good. Excellent. We've got Resolution twenty-three, one thousand and four. And this, this is the first round of awards the council will do this year for our community grant program. This is a program that targets nonprofit and for-profit organizations that that serve the community in some capacity. And we are finally getting that program rolling. This is, I think, our third or fourth attempt. We've up to six applications this year. We've got sixty thousand dollars to give away. And I believe there are three applicants that will be receiving funds tonight, should the council approve the resolution. Another resolution, twenty-three, one thousand and five. And this is related to the presentation earlier tonight by John Wickersham and Kevin Brown. This approves a non-binding agreement, an MOU to allow all the parties to work on some long-term solution to the issues in our city's watershed. The way I look at it, this is this is us putting the team together to start looking at this problem in a serious way, and it's a it's a good team. We've got the city, of course, we've got the landowner, Nuvi Natural Capital. And they have been more than willing to work with us so far, Sustainable Northwest. They are great at fundraising. And what North Coast Nine Conservancy also good at fundraising, also practical experience with land conservation. So it's a great team. The MOU has got some objectives in it. At a minimum, we're going to look at developing a habitat conservation plan, maybe a conservation easement. But it could include up to purchase of the watershed at some point. But that'll be down the road. In conjunction to this this MOU, the city also has been approved approved funding to put together a source water protection plan as well. And that source water protection plan would be a great way to have consultants put together a roadmap for us. How are we going to get from here to to ownership of our watershed or whatever, whatever the final solution is going to be? That funding will be used to put that roadmap together. So I think we're on the right, we're on the right track here. And this is just the beginning. Okay, the next one, yeah, this 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 resolution, the county took a little bit to get to it, but and and we looked at this before, but this is approval of the lease with Tillamook County for control of the Lake Lidle boat launch. And if approved tonight, the city will start putting together a concept, concept plan based on all of the feedback from the public, public gathering we received months ago. And so our staff, our public works superintendent, our city planner, myself, and our engineers will put together a practical plan based on all the input and bring that back to the council. And if we're lucky, let's see, so we'll take over control in January first. And so that's kind of the deadline to get a plan together and then we can begin work and hopefully we'll get some improvements in place by spring or summer twenty-four. And this last one, this was, this was, it's an interesting one, but the school district was open to allowing us to lease the tennis courts once again. It's a short lease, though. It's only one year. And so we'll perform some maintenance out there if approved tonight. City will, you know, look at our budget and see what the weather does. But if we take control of tennis courts, we'll make some improvements there. I've talked to our superintendent. And he thinks they can get at least the striping done so you can play pickleball and tennis on the same court. And if we want to look at long-term, long-term improvements, bigger improvements, we'll we'll work on a long-term agreement with the with the with the school district. And once that's complete, we can see what the appetite is from the council for 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 funding, maybe a little bit, little bit more comprehensive improvements there at the tennis court. And then the last council meeting, we talked about a few grants we were applying for, and we were successful with one already. We've heard back, and this is thanked in large part to Mary Johnson, our new city planner. So the DLCD awarded us a Housing Planning Assistance Grant. And what this is going to do, it's going to help us make the code zoning code amendments as required by Senate before six. So we're going to look at middle housing, affordable housing, workforce housing, things of that nature. And and so it'll be a nice practical application of of these new rules in Rockaway. So we're pretty excited about that. The DLCD is going to have a consulting team. It's going to come down and work with our staff, work with the planning commission, work with the city council to implement some changes to our zoning code that that should make a difference, we hope. And then Nan Devlin talked a little bit about this. We've talked about this quite a bit. There's a flyer up there. If you haven't received that yet, you will be soon. So Tillamook Coast will be facilitating, putting together a destination management plan for us. And basically what that is, it's it's a priority list of of capital improvement projects in town. And so over a series of four workshops, they'll work with the community to put that, put that plan together. Would you go to the next slide? And we've got a meeting scheduled. The first one is next Monday on September eighteenth at six P M. And there's a series of workshops and maybe by January, we'll have a plan for the council to look at and adopt. I think I talked about this at the last council meeting, but I wanted to show you what the new, an example of the new utility bill is going to look like. So beginning November first, so if you receive the water bill, that's the last one you'll get on the postcard ever. So you'll soon receive the full-size bill with a return envelope. You can track your monthly consumption. There'll be a little message center so we can send messages related to utility bills. And if you'd like to, there's an option to create an online account. And there's an option to pay online and you can opt into paperless billing if you'd like as well. And that'll all start November first billing cycle. And that's the notice you may have already received. If not, you receive it very shortly, announcing the the change in the bill. All right. And then lastly, we've got the best fire department on the coast, in my opinion. But they need support and they're holding an open house on October seventh and to, should be fun. Please join them and see what they do. And if you're interested, sign up at the fire chief there. So thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Shepherd. And I can tell you, we did get our new, a little flyer about the new utility bill in the mail today. Thank you for that. It's great. All right, since we have no public hearing scheduled, we will move on to citizen input on non-agenda items this evening. Now, the public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has four minutes to speak. Now, those of you who have been before here before, you probably remember on the the screen over to my right, stage left, you would see a countdown from five minutes. Well, we now have an orb. If you look next to City Manager Shepherd, when you start, it will be the light on the orb will be green. When it hits one minute left, it will turn yellow. When it hits a zero, it will turn red and scream at you. So my advice is, once you see yellow, really think about wrapping up your comments. So we're welcome to the orb. Our governing body takes the input into consideration. However, in observation of Oregon Open Meeting laws, this isn't the time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city manager is taking notes of action as needed. But rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city manager is taking notes of action as needed. Now, I have a signup sheet here. Um, do we have anybody uh remotely that has asked to uh comment?
No hands raised.
No hands raised. All right, so um, the chair recognizes Ronnie Duckworth. Please approach the podium and state your full name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, city manager. My name is Ronnie Duckworth, I live nine seven nine South Island, Rockaway. My concern is, I have a drug out on so much street. That's been going on for five years. And it's just not, it just got worse. It's non-stop all night. The gentleman has young girls. With backpacks riding on bicycles up and down the street. Parents live around the corner, so we have cameras, who was getting all kind of traffic. Now he moved it around in the corner down to his father's house, who's not in town. But it's just non-stop. I mean, you can just see them, they come down the street. Backpack sagging nothing in, and they come back, they go to the house, come back, backpack just full, go around the corner. Cars down there all the time for nights, non-stop. And it's just getting worse, worse, worse. And also, our street was where the entrance was, the tree was for, they had closed it down. But he got some friends, they went in there and ripped out all this stuff. Because they use that pathway to get to one O one without being seen, they go through the woods. So, help me. I mean, seriously, I mean, I mean, call the sheriffs. Many times, you know, they said they don't see anything, not much they can do, but, I mean, this is, this is ridiculous. I have twenty, thirty bars, might come back two or three times. I'm sorry, you don't visit your friends that much. And save two minutes and leave. So. What can I do? Somebody help me out. I mean, I could talk to you guys later, but we need to get this situation taken care of. And then also, I'm concerned about young girls there, because he is a registered sex offender and everything. And they look like they underage. So, I think. I just need help. And it's for everyone in our community protection, because when you have this kind of people coming in and out. You don't know what they're going to do, whatever they're going to take, or who they're going to hurt. So. Pretty much, that's it. Except for, like I said, the traffic that goes to the tree will get a lot of people to come down because of the Google. It's sending them the wrong way, they get in there, they spin out, they broke some windows in our neighborhood. From the cars, you know, people getting upset, they will fart anywhere. I mean, I. I have left, went to work, oh, why the love, come back, look at that camera, somebody park a van, their whole family get out, let's go down to the tree. You know. It's just, it's a lot of little things that can be taken care of, and I just want to. Help where I can. I'm done.
So yells at you, turns to.
Same thing, but that, that's the point. That's the gist of it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duckworth.
I'm not going to comment, but I'm just going to say, have you connected with uh our city manager on this?
Yes, I have talked to everyone.
Okay.
Yes, like I said, I just. I just need help to get this situation taken care of, because I don't want to see anyone get hurt, because it's coming. And just. Not just physically, but the drugs they sell, what it's doing to the community and to the young kids. And older. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. You have no old business before us, so let's move on to new business. Consideration of Resolution twenty three dash one zero zero three, approving fire apparatus, apparatus purchase and financing. Uh, this resolution approves a lease purchase agreement for the acquisition of a new Rosenbauer Viper aerial ladder fire truck. Uh, now, the public comment period is in the central part of local government meetings. Each person has four minutes to speak. I did not have anybody sign up to speak on this agenda item, and there's no hands raised. All right, so. The chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve or deny Resolution twenty three, one zero zero three, approving fire apparatus purchase and financing.
I uh, make a motion that Rockaway Beach Council approve Resolution twenty three, one oh three. For uh, purchase and financing of a new apparatus for the fire department.
Second, second. It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution. Twenty three, one zero zero three, approving fire apparatus purchase and financing. Uh, would the maker of the motion care to make any comments?
Yeah, I will just tell the community that this is, this isn't something that just came up tonight. Chief Hesse has been talking to us about this for a couple of years, probably. And at last city council uh meeting and workshop, we went into a lot of depth with it. He presented all the different financing options and we discussed it, so I just want people to know that this is, this is the culmination of a lot of work over a long period of time.
Thank you. Any other comments from councillors?
I would add that I'm really happy that we'll be able to let go of a lot of other old equipment and those insurance payments and maintenance payments and trade. For one thing that will do what all of those other things do, so. I think that's cool.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, uh, since there's no further discussion, let's record our councillor's vote. Councillor President Cheek.
Yes.
Councillor Franken.
Yes.
Councillor Hayes.
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis.
Yes.
Uh, the uh, resolution passed unanimously. Okay, uh, consideration of Resolution twenty three, one zero zero four, approving awards for the twenty twenty-three community grant program. Uh, the resolution approves awards to recipients for the twenty twenty-three community grant program. The city appropriated sixty thousand dollars for the community grant program as part of its twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. The grant program provides funding to nonprofit entities and other organizations that serve the Rockaway Beach community. The Rockaway Beach City Council shall determine the grant recipients and the dollar amount of each grant award based on the grant program evaluation criteria. Um, I will add to this that the council met during the workshop, and um, there are three grants that will be part of this resolution. Meals for Seniors Incorporated for ten thousand dollars, Friends of the Rockaway Beach Library for eight thousand two hundred dollars and thirty-six cents. They're very, very precise at the library. I appreciate that. And uh, Rockaway Beach Volunteers for two thousand dollars. Now, the public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has four minutes to speak. Um, I did not have anybody sign up for it, and we have no raised hands, so. The chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve or deny Resolution twenty three, one thousand and four, approving awards for the twenty twenty-three communication grant program as indicated earlier.
So, I, I am in favor of voting for most of them, but there's one I would vote no on, so.
It's important we're voting on those three that you mentioned, right?
Yeah.
Well, so tell me again.
Meals for Seniors, uh, Friends of the Rockaway Beach Library.
Right.
And Rockaway Beach Volunteers.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I believe any nonprofit or business should have to give us a nonprofit number or an E I M number. So.
So usually, we don't have a discussion until after there's a motion.
Yeah.
If you'd like, that's right, I would suggest maybe a motion to amend the resolution.
Okay. I motion that we amend the resolution.
And how would we amend it?
Um, I. I would approve Meals for Seniors, Friends of the Library. And um, I would entertain sea turtles if we were having a discussion about it as.
So, I think we already.
Parameters, we did discuss it, but we, we didn't all agree.
Right, that's not, that's being tabled momentarily, the sea turtle thing, but can we just split it out, the two?
I think that is a precise emotion, motion for us to.
Yeah, so if, if, if. So you, you'd make a motion to.
Approve.
Amend the resolution. Uh, to remove the Rockaway Beach Volunteers and add sea turtles forever.
I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, because we, I thought the council agrees to send it back to that organization to get a detailed budget and make it continue.
So you'd ask, you'd ask for a second.
Yeah.
And we'll see if there's, there's enough.
Okay, so um, is there a second for the motion to um, approve sea turtles, Meals for Wheels, or Friends and Friends of the Rockaway Beach Library? The motion dies for lack of a second. Uh, again, do we have an, I, I will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve or deny Resolution twenty three, one zero zero four, approving awards to Meals for Seniors, Friends of the Rockaway Beach Library and Rockaway Beach Volunteers.
I move that the Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution twenty three dash one zero zero four. Were the three that we originally mentioned.
Second.
I second the motion.
Okay. Uh, the uh, it is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution twenty three, one zero zero four, approving awards for Meals for Seniors, Friends of Rockaway Beach Library, Rockaway Beach uh Volunteers. Would the maker of the motion care to make any comments?
Um, no, for the comment.
Anybody else wish to make any comments?
I, I do, so that, so there were six applicants, and I want, if the applicants are here, I want them to know the others were not denied. They're going to, we just need more information. And so they're going to be sent back for more information, and these are the three we felt. The information was complete enough to move forward.
Thank you, that was excellent. Thank you.
So I'm still on a pick and choose, because I vote yes on two and no on one. I get to have my vote.
You vote on the motion, and the motion is for the three of them. I mean, that's how Robert's Rules of Order work. We have a motion, uh, a motion and a second. All right, uh, is there any further discussion? All right, um, we'll now determine how councillors vote. Councillor President Cheek.
Yes.
Uh, Councillor Franken.
Yes.
Councillor Hayes.
I'm going to abstain.
Councillor Martin is not here. Councillor McGinnis.
Yes.
Um, it passes with three yeses and one abstention. Consideration of Resolution twenty three dash one zero zero five, approving a memorandum of understanding among the participants of the Jettie Creek Working Group. This resolution approves a memorandum of understanding among the participants of the Jettie Creek Working Group to define their respective roles and responsibilities. In order to achieve mutually beneficial outcomes and resources in the lower Jettie Creek uh watershed. Uh, the public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has four minutes. I'll just remind you that the orb is watching. Uh, and I have uh three individuals who will speak on it. Do we have any hands raised uh on the, all right, so. Um, the chair recognizes Nancy uh Webster. Please approach the podium and state your full name and address for the record.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Nancy Webster, and I live in two six five three six White uh, Rockaway. And um, I'm going to start off with the, um, I'm representing North Coast Communities for Watershed Protection. We represent. Twelve hundred subscribers, or actually fourteen hundred at this point, that are concerned about safeguarding and restoring our drinking water sources from here to Astoria. Um, I have lived here fourteen years, and during that time, I have watched from my porch the logging and spraying within the Jettie Creek watershed. When they spray, we can smell it. In the last twenty years, ninety-five percent of this watershed has been logged. This logging affects the quality and quantity of our water. This is a public health issue. Recently, each summer, we, we can observe the Jettie Creek going into the bay from the jetty. This last summer, at one point, there was not enough water to actually make it to the bay. This has been chronically getting lower and lower. I am glad to hear that we are talking about the Jettie Creek MOU on the agenda. I think this is very important to be discussing this. This is the future of our drinking water for us and for our grandchildren. And I just want to comment, I have been working on this fourteen years, and I think Luke and I have known each other now for thirteen years, so. Probably longer than any of the rest of you. I am concerned that this is such a critical issue for our drinking water. There are shortages up and down the coast currently. And this was at short notice, only on like Monday evening, that I learned that this MOU was being presented, that what was the, what was the involved in this MOU? And I feel that there was lack of, it was a short notice, lack of public input and lack of transparency. I was involved with the Jettie Creek Working Group officially four years ago, and I was involved that we wanted an assessment of the Jettie Creek watershed. At that point, because of the industry control of the Jettie Creek Working Group and leadership in it, there was no, to be no outside assessment. And no one in that, and we, our group quit my, I quit my involvement, because I did, I wanted to be an independent voice. No one on that group that was left drank the local water or lived in Rockaway. I'm glad now that the city is involved, but when I again look at the list of who's on that, no one on the list of the Jettie Creek Working Group drinks the water. And I, I looked at the MOU, it's complicated to look at it, and I think it is basically the same annual MOU that was presented. Four years ago, which is basically led by industry as to what they think should be the best for our watershed. I think at this point, we, this is critical for all of us that drink the water. We need. To have citizen involvement. We want the city to be the lead, not to just be accepting what the industry is, spokespeople are presenting. We want a concerted plan for citizen involvement. We want, I want to reinstate the MOU with the city at the lead with citizen involvement. We all drink the water. We need, and the independent assessment of where this watershed is, based on science and the his past history. Is this still a viable water source for the city of Rockaway? What is the chemical contamination after multiple sprays of pesticides, including rodent sites? We need an independent restoration plan. It doesn't need to be industry guiding us on how that we're going to restore our watershed. We need a plan that's developed by outside foresters and scientists. For example, one time I asked a B L M restoration scientist, oh, sorry.
Want to, any concluding comments?
Sure, I think it's time for change. The health of this watershed is the health of the people, the wildlife, and the fish. We have gathered seventeen hundred signatures of locals and people that visit saying, no more logging and spraying in our watershed. We feel the best step forward is the city ownership. We want the public trust doctrine that says it is our right to clean air and water. Thank you for, we want the city involvement and with ownership. No more logging and spraying. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Webster. Uh, the chair recognizes Sandy Johnson. Please approach the podium, share with us your name uh and your address.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Johnson, and I live at four five seven Terrace Drive in Rockaway Beach. And first of all, I, what I'd like to say is, I have, agree a hundred percent with Nancy Webster. My interest in Jettie Creek began when uh, North Coast Communities for Watershed sent me information about the Jettie Creek watershed. And invited me to attend Zoom uh seminars that they put on during COVID. Um, that basically educated about the um importance of protecting watersheds. So that was my initial involvement. Um, earlier this year, the city asked if I would be interested, um, I think because I'm a retired attorney, um, um, in helping with um, applying for a grant. For a water source protection grant, so that the city could do um, a water source protection plan. And I was, I'm happy to do that. I think that it's important that the city move forward. And I was, I'm happy to do that. I think that it's important that the city move forward um in um looking at the options with Jettie Creek. When I was working for the, on the um. Grant application, I did some online research and I made many phone calls trying to get more information because I don't know much about um. Grant writing for one thing and watershed protection for the second. And one of the people that I contacted was John Wickersham. You heard from tonight. And John told me about the Jettie Creek Working Group and invited me to be a part of it. Said if you're interested in protecting watersheds, you know. You know, you're welcome at the table. So I took them up on it. And I attended the first few meetings that they had, um they had stopped during COVID with their meetings. And I attended the first one that they had after COVID um. And there were some new faces at the table apparently um with the representatives at the table. And I asked, why is Rockaway Beach not here? They have a real important interest in Jettie Creek and they. Like, well, I don't think they want, wanted to be here. And I said, can we ask them? And they said, yeah, it'd be great to have them at the table. Um so I, you know, I talked to um the city and Luke. The city manager and uh the mayor both, you know, said, yes, we're interested and they have attended a couple of meetings. And um. The group was in um and involved in trying to update the memorandum of understanding that they had. And the one that's before you is an amended version of their, their original. I believe that um. The city manager had a little bit of input in what is in the memorandum of of understanding. But I think it's important that everybody understand that um. The memorandum of understanding is nothing more than a handshake. It's a handshake that says, we're gonna work together. We're gonna sit down and try to do the best we can in coming to a solution. It says in it, the party's intent to create a collaborative solution for long-term stewardship of the watershed. That is the intent. See, who I see the metaphor is. Does say, but it's non-binding. That's important. You know, if the city is not happy with the way it goes, we can walk away from the table. I agree with Nancy, we should have public input. But it's important that the city get to the table. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Daniel Howlett. Uh please approach the podium and say your name and address.
My name is Daniel Howlett. I live at one-three-two North the Great League Street.
Let him get through his address.
Sorry, Daniel.
Yeah, we don't want to take anything away.
You did exactly right. So a group of us all went hiking up into the Jettie Creek watershed just to see what the current conditions are. Uh some of the leaders here were were present on that hike. And 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 a journalist, so um it's very interesting to see. It started out with the shade, very cool weather. The moment you open up into this almost lunar landscape of just stumps. The temperature jumped about twenty-five, thirty degrees. And you realize, of course, we're running out of water. Because you can cut all the way up through the little streams. They leave a small buffer for the creek itself. But all the little baby feeder streams, they cut right through it. So it's no, uh. It's, it's, it's clear that we're doing the wrong thing by letting them cut. And pesticide spray. Um going back in history, little background. Um the city paid one point seven million to put in a water treatment plant in two thousand eleven. That means we paid for that. The citizens paid for that. By two thousand thirteen, Rockaway Beach had more water quality alerts than any other public water system. On the Oregon coast. So we're letting them cut and pesticide spray. And then we have to pick up the bill, the citizens. One point seven million. So we paid off that loan just this last year. And yet, at the budget meeting this next, this last round, uh uh city manager Shepherd. Proposed raising the water and sewer rates again. And my attitude is, we just paid off the loan. Let's lower the rates. Uh currently.
Excuse me, are you talking about the MOU? I believe that.
We'll get there. We'll get there. So uh from two two thousand nine to two thousand seventeen. Water rates have almost tripled. They'll pay for this new water treatment infrastructure. So the citizens have suffered and had to pick up the tab because it's, so now we have a memorandum of the understanding. We're finally addressing it and that's great. But we just got this memorandum memorandum two or three days ago. So I looked it through and there's nobody from Rockaway Beach except for Luke Shepherd on the list. Sandy is on the list as a member. So it's important as citizens that we step up and get involved and make sure that we have some kind of representation. Otherwise, it's just gonna be dominated by industry and we're just gonna get spoon-fed whatever they want us to have. Um regarding the stakeholders, you know, we can't just let uh the industry take over. We need to make sure we have some representation. So my recommendation would be that you say no to this memorandum and we craft our own memorandum and we come up with our own ideas. Because if you look at the language in this memorandum, it's very specific about, we'll do what's practical. We'll do what we can try to do, but I'm really not feeling there's really a commitment uh that we can do something about it. And then lastly, um the gentleman that wrote the article about this from the Cannon Beach Gazette. Bob Attila, uh maybe he's saying he's wrong, his name wrong. He really spelled it out really well. I recommend everyone, please read that article. Um we need immediate presence in Rockaway Beach. It's gonna stick up for the citizens. This is the kind of journalism we need and we're not getting. So it's great that Cannon Beach Gazette stepped up. A great article. I'd like to see more in in our time. Thank you.
All right, the Chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve or deny Resolution twenty-three one zero zero five. Approving a memorandum of understanding among the participants of the Jettie Creek Working Group.
Are you, you go ahead.
He just mentioned that.
Oh, he says there's more.
You know, and it hurt in it.
No worries, we're happy to have that. All right, um Nancy Lanyon, please approach the podium and state your name and address.
And my name is Nancy Nanny. At six-two-one South Anchor Street. I am a member of the North Coast Communities for Watershed Protection. Um but I'm speaking on my own behalf. Um I'm agreeing with everything that has been said so far. Um and. I'm a note taker and I just heard about this yesterday, so um please bear with me and try to keep it short. In regard to.
Lanyon, uh speak up a little bit. Please, thank you.
First and foremost, I think it is absolutely wonderful that this working group is working on addressing the. Pardon me, the um Jettie Creek watershed. I do note that it is the lower watershed that I'm talking about, not the majority that is already over ninety percent clear-cut. And they still perform aerial spraying, which uh water runs downhill and air tends to drip. So um first and foremost, no more clear cutting and no more spraying. In regard to this working group, I just have a few concerns. Again, for who is involved and what is the data, who is creating the data? So are there going to be, it it doesn't say, are there going to be independent sources of data collection? Um not just entities hired by parties involved. That's very concerning to me. Who is and how is a representative being appointed? For local community representatives said in the start. Um I'm unclear about that. Um I know that we are not being financially obligated, but I'm concerned I just have to be. The one trust uh. Our city manager Luke Shepherd. What authority are we giving them exactly? I'm just not clear. In going through the pages and verbiage of uh what they're doing. I know that they're going to be creating the. Plan, I guess, and. We just don't know who's going to be. Involved and asked, uh are there gonna be listening sessions? Um the very last page, uh watershed analysis and partnership with lower current landowners. Um well, again, the commercial lumber company up above. Affects everything that goes on in the lower creek. So it's just details that I'm concerned about this. Um the map of easements, I don't see that, so I don't understand what easements exactly you're being talked about. I've gone to walk to you, taken pictures of beautiful trees that sounds like might be part of. A a clear cutting or cutting, thinning effort. Okay, so again, I agree with Nancy Webster and Sandy Johnson. And um the fact that we have to have a history here that we've been trying to protect for so very long. And I I just wanna make sure that this working group is actually gonna be listening to, yes, the people who drink the water. And the representatives who are going to be ultimately signing off on whatever working plan. Um is supposed to occur by the end of next year, December. So. I don't know, I would appreciate a pause possibly so that it can be more reflected. Uh I again going to trust Mr. Shepherd implicitly um about. Seeing it evaluating that um. And in accordance with the municipal laws, regulations and procedures and. Uh endeavors will be outlined in separate agreements that will be needed. Writing by representatives of the party and independently authorized by whom. I just, I'm I'm having a tough time understanding what's being asked, why it's being asked now, knowing you've been working on. So I just, I have an uncomfortable lack of knowledge and um. I would just appreciate a pause of this extremely important, important uh venture. It's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve or deny Resolution twenty-three one zero zero five. Approving a memorandum of understanding among the participants of the Jettie Creek Working Group.
I make a motion uh that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution twenty-three one oh five, the MOU.
Second.
I second the motion.
All right, uh it is moved and seconded that the Rockaway Beach City Council approved Resolution twenty-three one zero zero five. Approving a memorandum of understanding among the participants of the Jettie Creek Working Group. Um would the maker of the motion wish to take the floor?
I I I will be glad to explain. Uh. I see most of my friends here. Um I am a member of the North Coast Citizens for Watershed Protection and in fact, I helped form. The group early on, a decade ago with Nancy and have been to most of the workshops. And what I know is there hasn't been any traction in all of these years. To to protect our watershed. And this is the first thing that has come forward. To the city council in writing that we can participate in. And and get some traction. And the first MOU. Was way before COVID. And uh so putting a pause on it. How much longer did we put a pause on it? Everything's been paused for years and years. So my viewpoint is, let's let the city representative, this is the first time the city has ever joined this effort. And all, and I like uh what uh community member Sandy Johnson said. When she said. This is just saying, we're going to work together. It's not a plan that says what it's gonna look like in the end. And hopefully there, we we can work on that later. City council will have some control over that. This is just saying, the city's never been a part of this. The city wants to be a part of this. Let's agree to that. And that's why I made the motion.
Can we discuss it?
Uh any other comments? You're more than welcome to to uh.
So I actually would have voted yes on this if it weren't for the public comments that I heard. And I wonder about adding the North Coast Community. For Watershed, make them a stakeholder too. And then I would approve the motion as well, but I agree, these are the folks that. I wouldn't have known the information if they had not shared what they had shared. And I've been on board with all of this for over twenty years. And so I was very excited about it, but now I'm not, you know, and and having been like on the Nature Preserve Committee for. However, many years and then boot it off and not a part of the final planning, you know, I don't wanna see us doing that to citizens. I I'm excited about it. I'm excited about going forward, but. I'd like citizens added as a a stakeholder too. Or to table it to the the next meeting and see.
We have a motion and seconded motion before. Any other uh comments from councillors?
And I was gonna save this to the end. I too am a member of the North Coast Community for Watershed Protection. And um there's a lot of information. And it's, we get um very wound up about it. And that's important because it's our drinking water and we all need water to live. Sometimes we have to, we have to be very diligent because sometimes information. Is also portrayed in a way to make it a little bit more inflammatory. That's not to say that what is presented is. False in any way. For instance, what Nancy's uh. Logan Lanyon said. Not at the table is the above the, all the clear cutting in the company that owns that above. That would be great to have them at the table. That's a huge impact. But we do have people and groups at the table who are. A a good portion of them interested in land and watershed protection and conservancy, including us. I agree with. Uh Mary that uh councillor Guinness that we have. With a seat at the table. And I have great confidence. Maybe it's unfairly burdened, but for Sandy Johnson to be at that table as well. Very grateful for that. Um I'd, we need to. Extremely important that we address the watershed for our future water needs. Um I have strong concerns about the wording of a working forest. Because this is a type of language that might be used. On the one extreme, right? We have extremes on both sides, right? Um. That really is just code for taking all the trees. Um and uh let's see, um. I do appreciate the discussion on environmental enhancement enhancement and cool, clean water. Um it doesn't necessarily address uh whether or not we'll have appropriate levels of water. Right? That's really important. Yes, I want it to be cool and clear and clean. But we need enough of it to uh supply our community. Um and again, this is an issue up and down the coast, right? Uh but. I think people would be pretty surprised. How um delicate the situation is now. It's taken about twenty years to get here from what I understand. And some reports say that it'll take another twenty years to restore the watershed such that it operated as it used to. Um I'm very concerned about uh the fact whether or not best methods are in place. For um. Enhancing the watershed. There's a lot of uh good work out there that we could implement. And um. You know, uh there are even modeling programs that can show how to restore. Uh these types of situations. Um I don't know if those people are at the table or again, this discussion about independence with data and all of that. Um so um there was uh. As Daniel was pointing out, Mr. Howlett, that there's been significant economic impact and that's something that's not often discussed. And the cities and towns tend to take the brunt of that economic impact. And um uh some of that happened prior to New Veen's um ownership of that. Um so to be fair there. Um and so, but one of the things the article, which I have read, didn't point out is it it. Lambasted all the uh. The uh health concerns and issues that were happening when we were getting flagged before the infrastructure was improved. And then talked about the cost of the infrastructure later in the article, but it didn't discuss how that completely. Uh cleared up the other. how that completely uh cleared up the other health concerns that it was so uh poignant on discussing at the beginning of the article. So we really have to take in information and read it carefully and because it can be inform inflammatory either way. But the main thing is that our watershed needs help. So sorry, I went on kind of long.
Thank you. Any other comments from councillors?
Yeah, I, I just want to add on to something that councillor Franken just said. When she said it doesn't include, and I think Nancy said this, Nancy uh Lanigan said this, that it doesn't include the headwaters. This is something that a lot of people don't know. Multiple timber industry companies own multiple parts of our watershed and we're only dealing with one partner that's willing to sit at the table and talk to us. Uh, other timber companies have been reached out to and they have not indicated that they're ready to sit at the table with us. So we're, this, all this MOU does is work with that one timber company, get the ball rolling, take care of what we can take care of. It does not tell how the water will be taken care of. It does not tell how the timber will be taken care of. It just says city council is giving our city manager permission to go to the table and talk with the groups. And I, and I think that's important.
Uh, uh, thank you. And thank you for mentioning that the, the, the clear cut area is owned by another timber company. They have been invited to the table as uh councillor Mangan said, and they've chosen not to come to the table. I haven't given up on them. I, I, I do want to run, take a run at that again, because I would love to have them at the table because that is an important part of the solution that I think uh Mr. Howlett uh pointed out. Um, I, 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 I personally am very excited about this working group. I think we've got a good group of people um, uh, having a long-term sustainable quality and quantity of water is very important to me. I talked about it during the campaign. Also citizens engagement. And so we will make sure that as we go through this process, our citizens will be very engaged in, in understanding what we're doing, having opportunities to, to input in the process. And I'll, I'll end by saying, independent of us uh participating with this group, we are going to uh go out and put an RFP out once we get to check uh for the grant, which we are pretty confident we're going to get, an RFP for a consultant to work with us. The city is going to select the consultant um, to work with us, not the Jettie Creek Working Group. Um, the consultant will have access to that group, but the consultant will work for us uh as we move forward to, to build out a uh, a source water protection plan. I guess last, this whole thing is not cheap. And um, none of the solutions are perfect, but we do need to address it and we need to start now.
And I know we're not voting on this, but I just want to say this. I hope that uh community member Sandy Johnson continues to be part of the group, of the working group.
Oh, thank you. I was going to mention that Sandy drinks the water and I drink the water and we're involved. That's okay, no. All right, uh, let's uh, is there any further discussion before I take a vote? All right, um, councillor president chief?
Yes.
Uh, councillor Franken?
Yes.
Councillor Hayes?
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis?
Yes.
Uh, it, the resolution passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution twenty-three-one-zero-zero-six approving a lease agreement with Tillamook County for the Lake Lidle boat launch. Uh, this resolution approves a lease agreement with Tillamook County for the Lake Lidle boat launch property for a period of twenty-five years, beginning January one, twenty-twenty-four. No payments will be made, but the city will manage and make some improvements to the park to increase recreational opportunities for the public. The Tillamook County Board of Commissioners has approved the agreement and is now ready for city council approval. Uh, don't think we have anybody signed up, any raised hands? All right. The chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve or deny Resolution twenty-three-one-zero-zero-six approving a lease agreement with Tillamook County for the Lake Lidle boat launch.
I uh I uh would like to request that we approve the lease agreement for the Tillamook County Lake Launch.
I second that.
It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approved Resolution twenty-three-one-zero-zero-six approving a lease agreement with Tillamook County for the Lake Lidle boat launch. Uh, would uh, uh, president, councillor president chief wish to make any comments about this?
I just want to let everyone know that Mary McGinnis has been working for this, on this project for a long time. I don't know how many years, but it's considerable. And she's the one that brought me in on it. Uh, I really appreciate that. Uh, I think we need to improve the lake and I think this answers and uh gives us a good starting point on how we can make this something that everybody's going to want to use and enjoy.
Thank you. Councillor Hayes, did you wish to have the floor?
I'm thrilled about it. Yeah.
Any other comments from the councillors?
Well, I, I, this is one of the projects that with our new uh transparency and community involvement, and we've had so much community involvement around this that I feel really confident in, in what we're um, on the mo, and the motion. And I want to thank Penny for joining me. This all started and Sandy Johnson was one of, it was a group of us who live in Rockaway kayak in Lake Lidle. And in the wintertime, we have to wade into the water where it's cold and get in our kayaks. And so we went to Luke and said, we need a new dock and a kayak launch. And then in all of that conversation, we realized the city doesn't own anything and the city couldn't put any new uh improvements in. And so uh, that's kind of how all of this started. And then we realized that most of the people in the community want improvements there also. So I want to thank uh, uh city manager Luke Shepherd and our new city planner Sandy John, uh, Mary Johnson uh, for their work they've done on it. Penny and I went with Luke when he originally made the presentation to the county for the lease. And, and it's just been a couple of years in progress. And I want to thank them for their diligent work also, Luke.
Any, any further discussion? All right, um, let's see how councillors vote. Councillor President Chief?
Yes.
Councillor Franken?
Yes.
Councillor Hayes? Councillor McGinnis?
Yes.
And the resolution passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution twenty-three-one-zero-zero-eight approving a lease agreement with Nea Connie uh, school district number fifty-six for tennis court property. This resolution approves a lease agreement with Nea Connie School District number fifty-six for tennis court property for a period of one year for a payment of ten dollars. A previous twenty-five-year lease with the district had expired. All right, do we, I don't have anybody signed up. Any, any hands raised? All right, then.
Good question. Our packet says twenty-five years. It's just one year.
It is just one year. Our apologies. Uh, if you, if you read the lease agreement, it, it stipulates one year.
I motion the way council resolution number twenty-three dash one zero zero.
Second?
A second.
Okay, all right. It is moved and seconded that the Rockaway Beach City Council approved Resolution uh twenty-three-one-zero-zero-eight approving a lease agreement with Nea Connie School District number fifty-six their tennis court property. Um, would the maker of the motion care to make any comments?
Um, I wish we had a longer length with um.
Any other comments from the council? All right, um, since there are no further discussion, let's record how councillors vote. Uh, councillor president chief?
Yes.
Councillor Franken?
Yes.
Councillor Hayes?
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis?
Yes.
And the resolution passes unanimously. Well, let's move on to council comment. The chair recognizes councillor president chief.
Well, I want to thank fire department for their diligent work on the fire that we had this past Thursday or Friday. I also want to thank the sheriff's department for all of your diligent work that you have done in the last week with all of the emergencies that we've had here. Uh, I really appreciate that you all have shown up to speak to us tonight. I also want to thank the people that are, are residents here in Rockaway. Uh, they have stood up and helped everyone through this crisis. And I think that we've all gathered together as a town uh, and as a group uh, through a lot of pain and suffering this last week. And I want to say thank you for everyone that has voiced their support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Franken?
Uh, I think I said uh enough about watershed issue. Um, I, I do want to thank our emergency service providers for getting us through and uh this, the difficult uh week we've had. And uh, and I hope you all know that you're very much appreciated. And uh, uh, thank you all who came to speak out for our watershed. I appreciate that. And I mean, I'm hopeful that we're going to make progress on that.
Thank you. Councillor Hayes?
Yes, I um, so it seems to me that you know, we had citizen committees and as we sit here and talk about the watershed, we had a lot, a nature preserve and waterways committee. We had a beautification committee. I would like us to have more citizen engagement and involvement in the things that are happening with us. We have a lot of really smart retired people, hardworking people who are interested. And um, and, and so I'd like to see us develop some of those committees. The waterways committee would be perfect for this kind of thing. And I see a great need for beautification. And we've talked about a tourism committee again for I don't know how many years. And so I've been saying this, I've been here six and that's six years now. And I keep saying that over and over and it's on our list of projects and it gets tabled and then other stuff lands on the agenda that I've never seen before. And I have not had any comment about. And I'm a little baffled about that. You know, the memorandum, I believe, could have went to the workshop, that we could have discussed it. I'm confused why some things go to the workshop and some things go to the agenda. And I'm really frustrated about that because I've been doing this a long time. And, and I'm here because of all of you and I value what was said tonight at the, the podium. And I feel conflicted about my vote and I don't like that, you know? I, I love that Sandy's there, but what if Sandy moves next week? Then who's gonna, you know, do that? And, and, and I can't, I know that. My plate is full and many of our plates are very full. And so I say, let's share some of it with the experts that we live next to. So I, I'm growing very frustrated about some of that stuff. Um, I'd like to acknowledge our emergen, emergency services and the staff that is behind all of you too. Because they're deeply affected and so are your families. And, and so you're all in my thoughts and prayers and um, and I want to talk about Adam. And, and what a special human being he was, because when I look at the diversity of people in our community that felt as though they were special to him, I think that takes a really special human being. And so I think, you know, that's probably something to do with who he was. And uh, I, I just felt like I needed to talk about that. So um, the kite festivals this weekend, we are completely plug full. Please don't bring your, your car to downtown Rockaway. If you're a vendor, please don't be mad because you're packed so tightly. Please bring your children. We have twenty-six kite flyers from all over the United States coming to fly, fly people from Alaska and whatnot. Very excited about it and I'm kind of looking forward to it being over quite frankly. Um, and uh, I hope that we'll do a winter workshop so that we can work through some of the stuff. I feel as though we've done a great deal, all of us together, but I also feel like a lot of stuff's going on. I don't know anything about. And it's my job to know about it. It's why I was voted where I'm at. And so I um, I want to do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for the kite. Thanks to the chamber for the, the kite festival. Looking forward to it.
Uh, I also want to thank uh city staff, our fire department, our volunteers and the sheriff's department for all of the extra work that you've put in this last two weeks to help us, help the city and, and uh and overtime and, and it's appreciated. Um, I, I also want to, to mention that um, speaking of the kite festival, we, and I think the city council voted on this already, but I would like to see a, a change. It is, we require the chamber to clean the public restrooms during the kite festival. And I feel that that's not a, a, a real safe thing for the community volunteers who are working in the kite festival, or I mean, we're not trained to sanitize public restrooms. And uh, so I would like for the city to look at maybe hiring an outside company to come in and clean the restrooms during the kite festival. Since uh many people, thousands of people who are not going to the kite festival also use those public restrooms. And, and also because I'm, I volunteered to work and I'm not going to clean the walls. So you're in my ship. There will not be.
Wrong, that's too much information.
Oh, well, you can blame the dirty restrooms on me then. Um, um, we have some ordinances that need to be updated. We have some outdated ordinances. The planning commission ordinance is one of them. And a couple of people have mentioned the need to have like an all-day workshop or something and really tackle and, and start working on some of these uh ordinances that need to be updated. So I want to encourage that. Um, and uh committees, uh councillor Hayes mentioned that. Um, citizen involvement and uh finding ways and committees and ways to get the citizens involved. And if, if anyone doesn't know, committees start with city council. We create the committees. The mayor appoints people to the committees and then set city council uh uh says yes or no to those people who are appointed. So I would like to see some of that. Um, and uh, little plug, the, the mayor and I are going into Nea Connie uh social study, high school social studies classes in a few weeks and teaching them about how government in Rockaway works. And uh, I, I'm pretty excited about that. Uh, and then lastly, I want to mention the success of the Thursday markets. That's been a real boost to the economy and to the town. And I want to mention one per, uh, an example of how it grows small businesses. There's a person named Maggie Donald who graduated from Nea Connie High School. She's in her early twenties. And she has a little, she's starting her own business called Maggie Moo, M O O, Maggie Moo's uh jewelry. And she has a booth up every week. And uh, and I really enjoyed talking to her about how they, she's getting exposure. Uh, and she's just an example of all the new businesses that are uh growing because of our Thursday market. So I want to compliment the chamber on that. And I also want to thank everyone for coming and talking. Your, your concerns about our drinking water and about the MOU have been taken very seriously. And uh, the city council will hold the city managers fired to the, maybe I shouldn't use that term when there's a fire chief back there. But we will hold him accountable to make sure that the best interests of the city is represented. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Um, city manager Shepherd and I held our monthly coffee with manager of mayor on August twenty-fourth. We included a summary of the issues discussed in the meeting packet for council and community members to review and consider. Uh, the next coffee with manager of mayor is Thursday, Ja, September twenty-eighth. I strongly re, recommend that you attend it as, as it is an opportunity to meet your neighbors and share your thoughts on Rockaway Beach with city manager Shepherd and me. It just continues to be an example of our commitment to have a, a citizen resident engagement with what's going on in the city. At that recent gathering, um, a new resident uh asked how to get engaged with the city. So we suggested attend or watch the city council workshop on the second Wednesday at four-thirty PM at city. On the second Wednesday at four thirty P M at city hall. Doesn't mean you have to attend, you can always go back and watch the the recording of it. But that's where discussions set the stage for decisions. So if you do one thing to find out what's going on in your city. Watch the video of that or attend the workshop and experience those discussions. Uh it was added to our. Um process in December by city manager Shepherd, and I think the council uh uh. Universally agrees it was a great add and allows us to do more work on your behalf. And then we said uh attend and watch city council meeting on the second Wednesday at six P M. It obviously follows that workshop. And that's really the decision making meeting, so it's a way to see um uh uh. The decisions that are being made, and of course, we have special presentations and discussions. Uh and then I I learned this last summer um and and began attending and watching the planning commission meeting. On the third Thursday at four thirty P M at city hall. Um the planning commission i- is a key uh commission in our city. Land use decisions are made and then sent to the council for for a sign off, but they have discussions and deliberations. Um the Lake Lidle boat lodge project is one that they were very involved with, and they did all the initial work uh last year on short term rentals, so. Uh council workshop, council meetings, planning commission, um those are all things that uh either. After the fact, watching the the replay or attending are great, great ways to be engaged with your um. Um with your city. Uh next slide, please. All right. And Anne Devlin mentioned this already, and I think uh city manager Shepherd, but I'm just gonna beat this horse to death. Rockaway Beach contracted with Tillamook Coast Visitor Association to conduct a series of workshops. Within our community to direct the city in identifying projects that can be funded with transient lodging tax. This collaborative journey in the life of our city begins on Monday, September eighteenth at six P M here at city hall. I encourage you to attend this community information meeting to learn about the goals of this effort. Hear about sustainable tourism and destination management, learn about the three workshops and the dealer rules. This truly is a chance for you as residents of our community to come and be part of the process. City manager Shepherd indicated we'll have a report out in January, and that will flow into our budgeting process, so the timing is exceptionally good for this. Uh tonight, I want to lift up our Rockaway Beach volunteers, the full and part time residents and visitors. Who step up to help uh when Sandy Johnson and Robin Swain put out a request for volunteers. I want to thank the volunteers and Sandy and Robin for the positive and collaborative impact they have on our community. The activities for which uh they recruit, meaning Robin and Sandy. Uh volunteers are non-aligned and support the activities of both the Business Association and the Chamber of Commerce. Their goal is simple. Harness the amazing spirit of Rockaway Beach residents and visitors to make our beloved community even better. My thanks to them from the bottom of my heart, and so let us as a community continue to work collaboratively. And move forward to dream and chart the glory days ahead. I am still listening. Um thank you for your time and attention this evening, and may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Could I just clarify something, because I'm not sure we made it clear when we voted on the community grants? The ones that that we felt needed more information. Uh city manager Shepherd will be reaching out to those grant applicants for that information.
That's right.
So I just want to make that clear.
Thank you. Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
I make a motion that so we adjourn the meeting.
Uh second?
I second the motion.
It's moved and seconded. Uh let's record our councillors' vote. Councillor President Chief.
Yes.
Councillor Franken.
Yes.
Councillor Hayes. Councillor McGinnis.
Yes.
Uh we are adjourned at eight oh one P M on Wednesday, September thirteen, twenty twenty-three.